Okay, public hearing on the proposed plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost for 6.8 story street demolition project. Are there any public comments? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing to consider voluntary annexation of property located at Parkville A in the northwest quarter, northeast quarter of section 32 township 84, north range 26 west of Fifth, prime meridian, Boone County, Iowa, as shown on platte survey reported on platte book 29 page 231, the opposite corner of Boone County, Iowa, in the south one half of the roadway Park Avenue with an evening work of this property. Are there any public comments? Can you bring some comments? Public hearing is closed. Reports of standing committees, policy administration.
We now have a report, 10-4. 545 to discuss residency or.
Public safety, I do not have any comments, but we will have a meeting on the 29th. Economic development, or excuse me, utility committee, and I have nothing there. Economic development, Chairman Dixley.
Yes, on your desk is a letter written up in letter of support for a central Iowa ex school grant. There is no matching funding asked what we are doing. If anyone knows the background on central area exposed, they're continuing looking for upgrades to the process to use the property outside of just farm progress years. Dan from AMZDC is here and he might answer a few questions, but I've been working with this along with Bill and Mayor Slight on this project. What this brand is approving is for a marketing tourism grant and the special dollars that got released as COVID and the project target is to build an amphitheater out there for conference series. This will be hopefully a monthly series throughout the summer and we're talking thousands of people. The project and grant is looking at a total of about a million dollars. So they are looking for a local government entity to issue a minimum support. We wrote this up and submitted it for approval. Mayor Slight is all in and I just wanted to bring it to council if there's any concerns or other ones. Again, no matching dollars, just a letter of support from a local government entity. Yep, and we're going to get a motion to move it.
Studies?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
That's it, Your Honor.
You're building official.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the agenda, we have a request to vacate Short Street. Short Street is only a block long from West Eight Street, West Ninth Street, or West Building. Made by an individual, Larry and Shree Cook, lived down in the block, corner of Short and West Ninth. There are two other property owners on Short Street besides the Cooks that own land on there. We took it to planning, zoning, planning, zoning, heard from two neighbors, one written, one was at the meeting that will help against closing that street, one had a garage, the accessible, unattached garage back on the north side of their property state in Short Street four, and the other individual on the other side was opposed to it as well. Because of the opposition to the street, or to the closure, TMZ had recommendation not vacate the matter staff.
Appropriate recommendation. I'll make a motion to approve the denial.
Second.
Warren?
Yes.
Kirkla?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Agents officers. City attorneys, Jim?
Thank you, no report.
Director Phil Wirth, John Wells.
Yes, John, a couple of things. We got a new street to rent. It looks just like the other ones, so I'm afraid it's not gonna be a big difference, but just renting. We took down the flowers from the light poles today and the flowering pods because it's just too hard to maintain them. We're gonna get aggressive on intake thing out right now. We gotta overnish rain, so this is all gonna shovel all the rain off, sand everything where it takes. We're gonna maintain them and try to do them all together. Any questions?
Engineer. First project, an engineer is resolution 2919 for approval. If you remember in the past, we talked about American Recovery Act projects. This is one of them. This is the south. It mentions the West Park Avenue, Water Main, but for more clarity for council, it's the one on South Main, and then it goes east to touch South Marion and West Park Avenue. It's replacement of Water Main and then additional Water Main. We are contracting with SEH to engineer this project. The resolution is in front of you, the cost of estimates. And there's about $341,000. Staff recommends approval of this contract to begin that. We'll bid this over the winter and probably start in the spring. And I'll answer any questions you may have. Yes, Chair, you have something?
Just, your information, we just prepared a water main break this last week. The line is very bad shape. This is fantastic.
Kirkla?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Second project is also American Recovery project that's been discussed at council before. This is a safety project down at the water treatment facility and putting up some railings and steps around our silo for the water which employees need to access. This brings us in compliance with OSHA rules. This project is ready to move forward, again with American Recovery money that's been approved previously by council. This resolution is to approve the contract with SEH for them to do the contract and engineering on this project. Approve?
Second.
Overall.
Sucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Kirkla?
Yes.
Third item is an update on the wastewater UV disinfectant from a project. It's at the wastewater plant. You're all familiar with this project. We've worked on it for over a year now. I want to let you know that there has been a delay in the actual start of that project as far as the construction phase of it because of supply issues with Kink Construction. It's been delayed about a month. SEH assured me that, excuse me, Fox has ensured that the project will still stay on schedule, but will be a delay because of supply change. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Can we still do that in the winter?
Yes. And I'll just talk about this now, the wastewater study that council approved. We had our meeting today down there. This will be done down the wastewater planning conjunction with the UV project. We'll come crossing over, but the part that SEH is doing is the study, as if you remember, for us to see what any expansion, what other businesses that we can take with their BOBs. Now, that meeting was initially was today. That study is due sometime in February 2022. Any other questions for the engineering report? That's all I have. Public safety, Chief Adams?
Yes, Your Honor, first item is a Boone Chamber of Commerce alcohol license for the first Thursday Oktoberfest. I'm not sure what they're calling it right now, but there's not a sheet in your packet because we haven't done an inspection. It's set up to do just like it was clear back in June during the first one. So I just need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Kirkla?
Yes.
Sucker?
Yes.
The second item that I have is just an update that I've been online. We've officially accepted the AFG grant for the new tanker truck and we'll be processing the eighty-some pages of requirements through that process.
Chief People?
Your report, Your Honor.
City Attorney. Thank you, sir. First item is discuss approval of fourth American Recovery Fund project. Remember, you approved three. The third one is the backwash law at the water facility. We have now got a contract from SEH for that project that will be on the October 4th council agenda for discussion. So a fourth project, we wanted to staff wants to discuss with council is. So when we generated these projects, as you know, there are strings attached and things you need to follow from the federal government. We sent a email to the auditor's office for them to refute the justification for these projects, and I'm happy to report that the first three that we discussed have been approved by the auditor's office, that they fall under the guidelines of the American Recovery money. So as we'll be moving forward with those. When we did that, we also included justification for the expansion of the fire department. As you know, Justin just spoke of, the city got the grant of around $294,000 for a pumper truck. There are some issues with where we'll house the equipment. I'm happy to report that they approved that project as well. So if council still chooses, they can add it as a fourth project for the American Recovery money and we can use the money for that project. And I'll answer any questions you have.
I got a question. Can I go to the supervisors first? And ask for some of their recovery money.
I certainly think that's on the agenda for the fire chief and I'll probably go with him. This, I think the email that we got from the auditor's office approving it, that it falls under those guidelines helps us as we move forward with that. But for purposes of planning for staff, we know for first projects for that American Recovery money, as you know, we have about $928,000 in the bank. The second amount of that comes in about a year. If you add up to four projects plus what this council approved for emergency management, we're about somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000, and I'm talking about estimate of cost here, $35,000 or $40,000 over that first amount. But again, by the time we get some things done on the fire department expansion for that truck, we will, we'll be in an area where that second money will come. So in essence, we've spent, if you're like all these projects, we've spent that first half of that American Recovery money with about $35,000 to $40,000 into the second, second amount. I think they're all good projects. The first three obviously are four that you guys have already approved. So what I'm looking for tonight is either yea or nay on adding the fire department expansion under the American Recovery Act money.
There is a time limit on how fast we're going to spend that much, correct?
There is. Twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. By 2024. So by the time we get that second payment in a year, we're already in 22. So our staff is working very hard. I appreciate all their help on getting the projects. It took some work to get all these projects ready to go for this and get them approved. So I think we're in good shape. I'm comfortable moving forward. The fire department expansion is up to you folks. I think it's good most of those funds.
Yep.
And we did, we did approve to file the application. We were approved, so we need to be accurate. I am looking for a motion to approve the fire department expansion under the American Recovery Fund project. So.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Kirkla?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Few other items, sir. The next one is, I just wanted to inform council that on September 14, AMZDC held a job for at Cobblestone, that's a hotel. Councilman Pickleup and myself went out there. It looked like it was very well attended with about eighteen nurses. So that's good news. That's, that's a good project. I have an update on the HVAC project, if you remember, out for the central air in this building and the auditorium. That project will begin tomorrow. It'll take one to two weeks to complete. We may not have air in here. Our special council meeting on the 27th, but that should be only about a five-minute, ten-minute council. So just FYI, hopefully it'll be cool enough where it won't matter. So that project will begin tomorrow. I have data on the SE study. My last update is the project at 22nd and Lynn Street. If you remember, that was a fourteen and a half, fourteen and a half million dollar project. It was at the Iowa Finance Authority for Approval. We got approved for the family project. That's about an eight million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar project. So that project will move forward. We did not get approved on the senior project, believe it or not. We, I say we, mainly Councilman Pickleup has reached out to our finance authority. We're trying to get an explanation for it. I cannot say with a hundred percent certainty that that project will not be funded this year. There is a second round of funding coming around at the governor release that we're hoping that that project can fall under those funds. That's now waiting game for the developer to hear from the Iowa Finance Authority. So I'm not saying a hundred percent it wasn't. I'm hoping that it'll be picked up in that second round, but I can't say for sure. But the family one was approved and staff and Jim and everything will be moving forward with the development agreement at some point that we brought for council for approval with the appropriate public hearings and everything like that. It's good news. We got half of it, take that. Over an eight million dollar investment in this community. So that's very good news. We'll wait to see what happens on the street. I'll answer any questions you may have.
City developer, so obviously they're still interested. They only have the project.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I speculating if it does not get approved this year, I certainly think that's a project that they will submit next year for rounds of funding. And I think it will be, it would stand a good chance of passing in a year. And if you think about it, this is a big project. So they're probably not going to break ground on the family one till spring of '22, maybe summer. While they're just working on this project, we'll be submitting, if council so chooses, submitting another application for tax credits for that senior next year. So hopefully then, if it gets promoted, it'll just join it, but just a year later. That's the goal. So that total will be around fourteen and a half. Any other questions after the answers? That's all. Auto consent agenda, is there any that wants to have removed? Not that I need most of it approved.
Second.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Kirkla?
Yes.
Sucker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Ordinance, the second grading ordinance 2269 to allow the city women to make an adjustment to the leave protection program set forth in section 92.13 as it relates to program qualifications. Motion to approve.
Science?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Kirkla?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Hey, number eight, I don't have any comments. Number nine, council member comments, sidewalk discussion, councilman's committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. About a week and a half ago, received an email from, from the citizen regarding this southeast Lynn area. She's with us tonight, so I'll include her in the discussion. Essentially, those are areas in the neighborhood that don't have any sidewalks at all. And Bill went through it and sort of looked at that and verified those were that, that sidewalks. And concern was that we're gonna get a new school out there. There was already a lot of pedestrian traffic and that likelihood to increase. Wanted to bring that to our attention. And I'll let Alex say a bit more what she's done.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to bring this issue to the council's attention. I'm a mother of two young children and who enjoy riding and biking and walking. And the area that we live in is a lot of ranches, sixties and seventies ranches, a lot of young families and children. And I see a ton of pedestrian traffic, walkers, bikers, skateboarders in the street. And due to our proximity to the middle school and then the, the entrance to the, the country club development, and there has been an increase in traffic, especially with the middle school changing their drop-off procedures. Aldrich has become a very frequently used road. And my concern is that it's, it's a huge safety issue in our mind. A lot of night control intersections as well. We also have Cap Erby at the end of Southeast Lynn. It turns into a dead-end road. And then on the other end, if you go all the way down, there's Mickey Mouse park as well. So in my area, I really feel like something needs to be done, whether that be a incentive program that the council looks at or something else. I'm just hoping that you'll consider options, especially before the new elementary school gets put in. I think as a community, I would hope that we want to encourage outdoor recreation, walking, biking, spending time with your family. I would love to see our area of town be able to connect with getting to the south side or town through walking and biking. And right now, there's no direct route. And so that was kind of my initial thought in bringing this to your attention. I have talked with some of my neighbors about this. A lot of them would be very for putting sidewalks in. There are some that are not. And so I think that's something to take into consideration as well of how you want to go about doing this type of project. But I need to voice my support for some sort of program that would put sidewalks in.
So one thing I was discussing with Bill, that I think could consider right, right away would be currently when a new residential home goes up, staff has the authority to unilaterally waive the sidewalk requirement. They don't think that it is necessary. One thing we could do is maybe be a little bit more stringent on that and bring, and have those waivers come back as a start for the new builds. So I'll put that out there for inspection.
Yeah, just to clarify, we talked with them, if you build a new residential home, they are required, with the exception, you can file for a variance. Say it's out in an area where there's no other sidewalks. I think staff has granted those in the past. But if it's a residential house that's in among other houses right now, there is a requirement that they do, they do that. And generally, a variance would not be issued. And staff would not allow that. Am I correct?
Correct.
Correct. Just to explain that a little bit. So from the, when these houses were put in, obviously, there was nothing on our ordinance books from what Ed can remember that required it. So they, they weren't required to put in, so they weren't. This is a tremendous amount of properties that don't now have sidewalks in this area. This would be a very huge project to move forward with it. The elected officials so choose. So things that need to be answered, who pays for it? The homeowner pays for a hundred percent. Does the city budget money to help offset the cost? Are the people, and Jim can answer this, if I speak out of turn, the people that didn't have to build them when it wasn't on the books, are they grandfathered in where they don't have to because it wasn't required when they built their house? Things like that. So those are all things that would need to be considered. Years ago, we had the sidewalks to school. I don't know if that existed.
It does.
It does.
It does, but it's like everything else, starts out with tons of money and then they start starting it, creating a new program.
We have a percentage.
Yeah, that's how we could progress.
Would there be other programs that would be used also?
Well, the city budgeted money for sidewalks at one street. Well, repairs usually the property owner.
Right. We had a rebate program. We had twice, I've worked here, a certain dollar amount per square foot that the city paid toward people to put the sidewalks in. Isn't it helpful knowing situations like this? It was very popular. But I guess the question is, if you do a rebate program and we're trying to target that area, are we just gonna target that area and not use it anywhere else in the city?
And this is but not the only area in town either.
Right, I agree.
Because the sidewalk doesn't, so to speak.
Yep.
So.
We have a lot of those. We have a lot of those out there, but that was one of the discussions we had a number of years ago was, you know, there was kind of hot area and we wanted to target that, but then can you really, or do you really want to target one area and maybe put money into it, maybe our COVID for it and then?
I think we could run these structured like our slump programs. And we could target certain areas and offer a gear for them to utilize it. But I'm really thinking this is like goal setting.
Yeah.
Budget. No offense to everyone that's gonna be here after I'm gone, but you are gonna have the ability of goal setting a budget next year to figure this stuff out.
Yeah, I figured that's essentially where it would need to go in the next fiscal year budget, figure out how much we could last if we wanted to do that at goal setting. Having some historical information of what we budgeted in the past would be excellent.
I do. Yeah, I can get it for you. I mean, do I have that information, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes.
If we could take a look at that.
Yes.
That might help us make some plans when we do get into that.
Yep. And I can, I can bring back and work with Bill on seeing what, what was paid back, you know, the dollar amount by the city.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the other thing that would probably help us with this is county GIS could go through and get a really good map of where there are.
Sure.
Uh, sidewalks.
Don't, don't we already have a GIS for, for the, for the city? Yeah.
Okay, good. Let me just access that.
We do use Peggy Bossler a lot.
Yep.
She's very, very good.
Yep.
John, also, do we have in-house concrete work? Do you do a lot more?
Yeah, we pretty much do. Sidewalks in the corners, then we put ADA sidewalks in. But otherwise, it's pretty much small building.
Sure. Right. Could that be a potential hold-in as well as a, as part of the city's contribution for any working out of labor or supplies?
It's enough.
Something to look at.
I would have concerns about that on our staffing levels because we're, we're talking concrete work that we do right now for ADA and streets, right? Like 22nd.
Yeah, we're all doing intakes and we're doing street holes.
We were.
Something else that we.
It's something you could look at. I think at the end of the property city board.
Well, thanks for the discussion. I essentially wanted to get Alex's concerns out there and get this on the table. Consideration for anything about, because we did, we have talked about it before.
Well, that's been brought up for a number of years. So I suppose we're talking about that time again, that being this topic of goal setting.
Alex, did we talk about this, uh, argument?
Um, we talked about it a little bit in terms of walkability, in, in terms of attracting young families. At the time, I had like non-walking children, so I didn't really think about it as much. But yes, I think in terms of an economic development strategy, and I don't know, I haven't done a ton of research. I did a little bit on whether there might be walkability grants available, that kind of thing, outdoor recreation could be kind of moved into that a little bit. But yeah.
Another thing we have to discuss is the saving populations benefit from this. So public information, can we go forward with it? Okay.
That's good. Any other comments? Yeah, one thing, bid day is Wednesday at 1:00 PM. So up, up here in the auditorium with a 628 project. So we're excited. Looks like we're gonna be three or four bidders. So it's good, good press.
Okay, and I have something too. We had a constituent, an ED, that was asking specifically about concerns on the bidding process and work done on the green space ban shell, specifically the contractor that was involved in the process. Is there any concerns I should know about from other elected officials about the whole process involved in the green space? Is there any concerns I should know about from other elected officials about the whole process involved in the green space?
I have one.
April, would you like to say something?
Oh, I came to the economic development meeting this evening to ask if there had a request for proposals for the bandshell at the green space, and, um, I understand that there was not.
Again, that is the constituents' version, not my version, my questions and specifically the reason she has an issue with is that this candidate, at the time, not a candidate, the construction volunteer that was working with this project is now a candidate for local office and she has concerns regarding that dimension. That is why I promised to bring it forward to full council.
And even if there wasn't, what would you like, what would, what would be the remedy?
Oh, no, I was just asking for clarification.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's really all I wanted was a yes or no answer to the question, honestly.
Okay.
But I mean, going forward perhaps, would we give a remedy to set the, um, ceiling for non-fid contracts lower than what is currently asked? Um, I, I think that that might be a remedy that would be pursued in the future.
I think we follow the law.
We were dealing with donated funds and volunteer labor and, like I pointed out with the rest of the project involving multiple volunteers and donated from the concrete to metalwork to everything else. The issue at hand is dealing with the specific contractor that is not running for office, and as I pointed, also pointed out, that was predating his petition to run for office. So if we start going down that path, in my opinion, we would preclude anyone from ever running for public office if they have any interest of working on city projects.
Like, it's a little irrelevant now.
Again, I just promised to bring it forward, thank you for your time.
Okay, uh, any other comments?